It is six P M on April twenty first. Please note that we are missing board member Mark Branson this evening. And if you could all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we are needing approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
By Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. To count here. Right, we have no citizen comments this morning, this evening. Onto agenda item number five, fiscal stability. Looking for approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
By Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. On to item number six, collaborative connections. I am going to give the floor to Superintendent Eric Olson on the resolution of acceptance of gifts.
All right, good evening, everyone. We have six donations that came forward from our amazing community. In this particular case, all of them are from, are for the fishing league. So U M C donated a thousand dollars. Monticello Chiropractic and Therapy, five hundred twenty dollars. Stripes and Stuff Auto Trim Incorporated, two hundred fifty. Jeff Avetson Trucking, five hundred dollars. Dan Olson State Farm, five hundred dollars. And H two outfitters, five hundred dollars. All for the fishing team sponsorship.
Second.
By Jeff Hagley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those please say no. Motion passes five zero. And I just want to say how fantastic it is that our community gives back for such cool things, specifically the fishing team. My son isn't done on Monticello one, but when we lived in Annandale, he was part of the Annandale one. And it was just, he still remembers it. And it was such a great experience in on the lake we live on that they come out a couple of times a year and fish too. So it's really cool to see all the kids out there fishing and being out in nature. So thank you to our community members for supporting that. All right, now we'll move on to item number seven, teaching and learning. First up, help me welcome to the podium, our egg teacher from the high school, Jacob Wiltz. We're going to hear about his FFA overnight trip presentation.
Hi, everybody. Jacob Wiltz, I spoke here a while ago with just an update on our program. And now I'm coming to you with three trip requests. Two of these are in the summer, one of them's in the fall. So if I had to come for two, I know about the third one, we'll get it out of the way. So the first one we're asking for is what we call summer egg tours. And so the purpose of it is our FFA chapter is going to take a two day, one overnight trip. We picked somewhere in the state that's got different agriculture than what we would find right here in Monticello. And so it exposes the kids to new things, new businesses, new practices of farming, as well as really just being a good chance for the members to bond together during the summer. This, it's a pretty common thing, a lot of other chapters do this. More established chapters maybe expand beyond just the Minnesota borders. But for now, we're going to keep it local. So our plan as far as travel is one to two school vans, either two of the smaller school vans or Mr. Revanig has been working on trying to get a thirteen passenger van from Hoagland's. If we can do that and fit everybody all in one, we would do that. So our destination for this year, let's skip ahead a little bit, is we're going to the Owatonna Wasika area. So Owatonna's high school, they just built a new egg facility a year ago. So we're going to hopefully go there, do almost like a mini exchange program, get to see their facilities, meet some of their members. We're going to drop down to Austin, Minnesota then for the wonderful Spam museum. I personally have never been, I'm, that's probably the thing I'm most excited about. And then there's a couple of places in more of the Wasika area, which is where our hotel will be. There's an ethanol plant, there's a Farm America, which is kind of an outdoor tour of egg history. We've got a canning facility and then A U R I, they do research on egg co-products. So basically when we take the wheat or we take the sugar beets or we take the soybeans, the stuff that's left, finding a purpose for it. So it's part research facility, part like manufacturing, really cool there. So as you can see with this, and we'd be leaving on one day, June sixteenth, which is a Monday. We're going to leave in the morning, we'll stay overnight and we'll be back by Tuesday night. So nothing crazy long, pretty short and sweet. As far as the information you guys may want to know, I'll be the head chaperone. My wife is planning to come with as the female chaperone. And then our alumni president, who was with the last time I spoke, he will also be coming with. So we'll have at minimum three adults. Rooms kind of depends on what students are coming, but we'll have likely two male, two female rooms. And we're going to keep all the kids in the school vans. Cost, we are going to have the kids pay a little bit for this since it's not really a contest, it's a fun event. But otherwise, our alumni will cover the rest. We've done these Pizza Ranch Community Impact Nights, we've done two of them throughout the year. And so stuff like that really, that helps our alumni be able to sponsor this so the kids can experience it at little to no cost. So questions on, do you want me to hold questions till the end and just talk about all three?
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that. So then the next trip we're going to take, this one's going to be very vague because I won't know a whole lot until the end of May. We'd like to take our officers for the next year on an officer retreat. So our officer, currently we are accepting applications for members next year to be our chapter officers. We usually will have a six, a president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, sentinel and reporter. The interviews for that are not going to be until May and then they will be announced at our chapter banquet on May nineteenth. So unfortunately, I don't really know a whole lot about this because I don't know what kids are going, I don't know what gender they are. And also usually we, it's typical to let the officers have a say in planning where they would like their retreat to be. So my proposed location would be Duluth, but they may surprise me and say, no, we want to go here instead and we'll try to make it work. So that's really all I can kind of tell you about that. A lot of it to be determined later on. This is also something that many chapters do, they'll take their officers on a retreat. Kind of the whole purpose for it is to plan out the upcoming year. So we've got a big P O A or program of activities we have to submit to the state FFA association every year. I did it this year. I'm hoping that the officers can help with it next year. We'll go over apparel, we'll go over our activities, we'll plan our meetings. What are the expectations as far as leadership for being an officer? So it's kind of a mix of meetings and stuff like that. And then as you can see on there with our itinerary, we'll try to do some touristy fun things just to help the kids bond together. This would again just be a two day thing as well. So we'd leave in the morning, stay overnight, come back at the end of day two. Costs will be probably about four hundred dollars, a little bit smaller because there should only be six of them. Our alumni will sponsor it completely, there will be no cost to our officers. And then, then the big one, this is coming up in the fall, so we'll kind of bring it there. That way if there's questions, we've got times to plan ahead. The National FFA Convention is at the end of October every year and it's a really, really big deal. All fifty states plus a number of the U S territories have FFA chapters that come there. They estimate that there's approximately seventy thousand FFA members. And that's not counting all the advisors as well that descend upon Indianapolis for a week. They call it the blue plague because everybody has to wear their blue official dress. So you got seventy thousand high school and early college kids all dressed basically in the exact same thing. But the hope would be that we have a team competing. I'd love to come back here and say, you guys have to let us go because one of our teams qualified by winning state. Even if that doesn't happen, we would still like to go just for the experience. There's a number of workshops, you can see in one of the pictures there, the right hand picture, that's, they have a giant trade show. They take the entire Indianapolis Convention Center just for that trade show and college show, or college fair. And so it's a great opportunity for our kids to get to talk to colleges they may want to attend. A chance to meet with some of the big businesses in the industry, make those connections, talk to other FFA members. I know for me personally, the past two times I've gone, it's cool just to find an advisor. Last time we went, I had a nice long conversation with the, an advisor from Northwestern Louisiana. They do agriculture completely different down there than how we do it up in Minnesota. And just getting to learn like, hey, what do you teach, when do you teach it, how do you teach it? What are the cool things you do? What are the things your chapter does? So just that exposure is really the big thing of what we would like with it. So because it is a pretty big trip, my plan would be for this year at least to only offer to what would be next year's seniors and then this current year's seniors or this year's juniors and seniors. Based on the numbers that I have, I'm guessing that it would be approximately twelve members worth. And then I did just throw that on there because this is a really big undertaking. I have done this twice before, like I'm not going into this blind. I kind of have a feel for how things could go with that. So just to kind of show you the pictures, the magnitude of this. We got any football fans in here, Lucas Oil Stadium where the Indianapolis Colts play? That's where they hold the session, so they put a stage. You put forty to fifty thousand FFA members in there. That, that's pretty cool. And then the bottom two are just of the trade show with that. So again, you got, they estimate seventy thousand FFA members from all over the country, come there for a week. Plan would be to take two school vans. The big challenge is getting into parking garages as well as, because everything is so centralized, getting a bus there. I would feel really bad asking a bus driver to bring us there. And it's an absolute mess. It's a lot easier, there's a lot of parking garages all connected by the skyway. So you can get into a parking garage that's a couple of blocks away from where all the chaos is. And you can just take the skyway or just walk on the streets to get to where everything is. And so that's why I would prefer to take the vans. If we can get a second driver, we could take two eight passenger vans. If not, then I'd have to beg for Gary to give me the thirteen passenger van. May limit what we are able to do with that. So another challenge with national convention is that I can't just go and book the hotels because there are seventy thousand people from across the country all trying to get a spot there. The National FFA Association books all the hotels in Indianapolis and in like a twenty mile radius. And then they allocate it to the states. And so like I will have to request to the Minnesota FFA director, hey, I would like six hotels. I can give him a list, hey, here are the ones I'd like to be at. And eventually he'll say, here's the number of hotel rooms you have, here's the hotel you're at, take it or leave it. So in my personal experience, the times I'd gone with my old school, we stayed more out in the suburbs, about ten miles away. Much nicer, a little bit cheaper. And it's really easy to just drive ten minutes into Indianapolis. So I would be the head chaperone. I would likely bring my wife with again as the female chaperone. And then one to two alumni members as well, just because it is quite a big undertaking. Some graduated students, so the current year's seniors, they're off at college. Some of them may choose to fly into Indianapolis and then join us instead of coming to Monticello and riding the van. That's also commonplace for many schools to do, that they'll, they'll take whatever current kids they have and then whatever recent alums just meet them in Indianapolis. But once you're in Indianapolis, we would move as a whole herd or a whole group. So itinerary that kind of would plan out, basically two full days of driving and then two days at the actual convention, getting to see everything that you have there. There's also a lot of, Indianapolis is a pretty cool city to tour. There's a lot of things near the downtown part that you can just walk to and if you need a break from all of the FFA thing. So cost is going to be pretty high. Our alumni will donate part of that cost. One of our big components of the FFA is we don't want kids to have to pay a full amount or pay for everything. We'd rather they work and help with fundraisers. Fundraisers go to our alumni and then our alumni will help sponsor it. Since it is, excuse me, a four day trip with a lot of driving and in some nicer hotels, planning on charging kids a hundred dollars who are not competing to help with the costs. If they are competing, then I don't think that would be appropriate to also ask them to pay money for that. So some of the fundraisers we've got planned coming up, we've got two Culvers, excuse me, coming up here in May. And then Good Day Car Wash also wanted to partner with us. And then we'll have our big corn drive in the fall shortly before we go. So plan, I've kind of floated interest to kids, but the plan would be sometime either end of this year or in the summer, say, hey, are you actually interested? And then we can talk about giving the hundred dollars and confirming it. So questions on the trips before I go into the last two slides?
Oh, I like what you're doing. It's good, positive. So you're asking for three separate trips?
Yes.
There's a lot of things up in the air. That seems like the, you have one here on your request in June, you have some dates lined out. Your other request is a TBD likely in June. And so would we want to break this up into, I know there's three different action items. But I think it would be good to get some more information before we approve all three because the fall is quite a ways away. So I think it'd be good to know your end date on when you need to know by because in your presentation, it's good, really good. You have, you know, maybe two, maybe three, we don't really know. And as a board, we need to make a decision on what we see and what's in front of us. So I think from a planning side, it'd be my recommendation for the first one and the other two, as we know more, to come back. And that could be in May as you learn more. I like what you're doing, don't take it the wrong way. I just, from the board side, we need to approve and make sure all are ducks in a row with what we're approving. So that's just my comment on it. I don't know if the rest of the board wants to talk.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the purpose of approval right now is so you can actually start planning these other ones. And some of them, until he knows his officers, so he kind of gave the lay down, right? May is when he finds that out. But that's one of the trips, so he doesn't really know the landscape of, you know, is there going to be three females? Is there going to be four males, the room layout and stuff? So those are just some nuances that he'll have to just figure out once that time comes. But in general, the trip laid out that we would be approving is on this request.
Well, I, I understand that, but in someone's pay fifty or pay a hundred and then some are TBD. So that's, that's just where I want to make sure it's clear as to.
Are you concerned about if, if it would accrue any costs for the district?
Well, that, that's one, but the other one is the transportation, it's a little bit up in the air. Are we getting two vans, are we getting three vans? So what I'm saying is, is I think we just need to know more about how many students are going to be at the fall one on there and the, how that's all going to work because that's going to dictate what the cost is that he needs to incur, the school needs to incur. So I'm all, I'm, I'm all in support of, of doing it, but I think from the board side, when we approve it, we just need to have some more information, that's all.
Indy, you have to have approvals on each one of these by in order for you to do what you need to do.
So the, the purpose of putting all three of these together was kind of exactly what you said, Chairman Steven. Because you guys, your meetings are on Monday, a lot of FFA events are on Monday. So when I originally reached out to Devany and said, hey, when can I get on the schedule? She sent me and I was like, well, I can't do any of those until June. And so I just want to get in front and bring things to you. I'd be more than happy to, with the officer retreat and this national convention, provide updates. If, if that can be done via email, that would probably be preferred just in case I can't be here. But I wanted to, to stand in front of you guys and present, here's what I know so far. Am I on the right track or if you have major questions, I can answer them. As far as the question or your comment about the cost of the district, there should be no cost to the district for any of these. It will either be the students will pay or our FFA alumni will pay. They, I don't think Mr. Revanig would appreciate if I also handed him a bill for any of these. So now, if one of our teams qualifies for state, that'd be the only thing he and I would probably have to talk about because to my knowledge, that's not something like, our football team, our basketball team can't qualify for beyond the state tournament. And so that might be something that we have to sit down and see, hey, what we could do. We'll, I'll know more from that eight days from now when we know the results from our state convention.
Okay. And then I don't, I don't know if he would have to come back and present on the second two. He would just have to send us information.
Just approve the first one and then when specifics come in or email them to us. We already have your presentation.
Yeah, we can add it to the agenda on there. I just want to make sure we don't approve something and then things change. You have to come back and do it later. I'm just, I'm trying to support you.
Yeah.
That's all.
I think this is, you know, until we go through a cycle, a year's cycle, I think we're used to approving things that are very definitive and so it might feel a little new. But I do think this is going to be a trend of not knowing this because of just the timing of FFA. So I think once we get through kind of like how you guys have come with a problem solving approach to this, it'll just feel more comfortable next year because we'll have seen and been through the cycle.
Yeah, I just don't want to approve some of the board law won't have it change and then have it be different with the board approved, which I know that's not really your intention. Don't worry.
None taken last. You guys have never had to worry about a week long student trip to Indianapolis for this before. So I want to, I want to be here and tell you guys, I got no problem with following up in the future with concrete details once, once I know them.
That sounds great. And we're good with if he's not able to attend to present that.
Correct. Yeah, he would just provide the information. It would get added to the agenda and we would, we would just vote at that time when you, when you know more information.
Perfect.
So.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So but the first one, I think we would be able to.
Yeah.
First action.
Yeah.
I was just going to ask the same thing about, are we able to just go ahead with an approval and then just simply ask for updates in case there's any big changes? Because it sounds like the only real cost to us is the cost of the of using the vans. So I don't see any reason not to approve them.
Well, here's what we'll do. We're going to vote for approval of the trip request one for the summer, right? And then what we'll do is we'll put these other ones on the agenda when it pops up, even though we know that you probably won't be coming and you can just send myself or Superintendent Olson your little blurb update and then we can make sure that's taken care of.
Absolutely. That works for me.
Any other questions? All right. So we are looking for approval of trip request one for the summer.
Do you have a couple more slides?
I do have two more.
Just kidding.
Always the problem. So just coming forth to you guys, actually, Mr. Olson, thank you for what you had said of kind of the out lot of new things here. And I will be pushing the envelope a lot with, hey, these are things that we haven't as a school district had to worry about before. But now that we have this FFA and agriculture program that it would be nice to have. And so one of these, just coming forth with a policy change request and not something that I'm expecting you to vote on tonight, but I don't know exactly the way that we'd go about changing this. But in the future, this, this would be really nice to create an unpaid employee position at the high school as an FFA assistant advisor to allow some of our alumni. And our alumni are not necessarily former FFA members. It's actually alumni and supporters. So it's parents, it's community stakeholders. Some of them are alum from other schools that have since moved to the Monticello area. But to allow one or two of our alumni employees so they can drive students to school vans and FFA events. Kind of the rationale behind it, most other schools have a paid position for this. There are very few other schools that just have one singular FFA advisor and that's it. Then for instance, at my old school, we actually, we paid an alumni. It was a mom and she was paid from the activities department, an advisor salary or an assistant advisor salary, simply so that she could go on overnight trips. So I'd like to point out that I'm asking for unpaid. I just need somebody that the school board approves or the school district approves to be able to drive the vans. Kind of the rationale behind this, there's a lot of points with it. Cost of busing is very prohibitive. Many of our events are either a full day or multiple days. Mr. Revnig was very kind and said because it was our state convention and our state tournament, he'd cover the busing for that. Otherwise, when he and I were talking about it, I knew it was going to be close to fifteen hundred dollars just for the first day of our state convention. So really taking a bus is almost out of the question for us at any point. If I'm unable to get a second van driver, then we've got times where I'd have to be able to limit how many kids we can take, which I really don't want to do. And it's also, it's really tough to get a school employee to first of all, get van certified. And if they don't have a pressing need, don't see the need for it. And then also to ask them to take a day off of school to chaperone. Most teachers don't like being gone. We'd rather be in the classroom. Benefit for the, the school district would be, there would be a little bit of savings as far as some of our contests, if we've got maybe a small contingent going and I'm not needed to be present necessarily, that we could have this alumni member take the van and take the students to the contest, thus saving you guys the cost of a sub for me. That's what most other districts do with this position as they kind of divide and conquer. If they have only one egg teacher, try to keep the teacher in the classroom a little bit more. So yeah, I don't, I don't know how to go about changing this. But if I could get it so that I could have a FFA alumni to also be able to drive our van, that would make my life a lot easier and allow me to probably open more doors to kids than what I'm currently able to. So with that, I'll, I'll be quiet.
My initial thoughts on that is this is something that we can bring back to policy and have a discussion on. And then we can get back to you on what the plan will be after we meet with some of the admin team and talk through that. Thoughts?
That works for me. So policy is the first.
Understand.
First Monday of the, of the month, so we'll have a discussion at our, so we'll have a May, May discussion.
I just figured while I had you guys all captive here, I'd get my money's worth.
For you. I appreciate that. Any other questions? Okay, then we are going to vote for approval on trip request number one.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
And Mr. Wild says you're walking away. I just got to give you a shout out for, we are partnering together on our next money on the move. Mary Money on the Moves, our one time a month. We get together in the community and do something very fun. And in this case, Mr. Wild is helping lead the charge two thousand Hills Farm. And we're going to bring kids to a farm and from out there is FFA advisors will be there, leading some of the way. It's a busy day. We have prom also that day. So but it's fun to get out into the community and I really appreciate you, me asking you to see if you had any ideas and you like just taking the ball and leading something pretty cool for kids. So thank you. I look forward to that day. I'm going to be helping in the barn the day before, clean some stuff up. So said that appropriately, so pretty excited.
Good job.
Thank you. All right. Item B is help me welcome up.
Because these are actions that we have to.
Oh, Devaney, do I have to? Do I have to scratch them or do we have to? Those action items.
We can just table and we can carry them forward at a.
I do have to vote.
Coming meeting.
You could just say the first.
Have to vote.
I'll just make a motion. I'll make a motion to table trip request two and three.
Second.
All right. Moved to table the trip request two and three by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no.
I was going to ask a question. What about the personnel request? Do we want to also table that?
No, it wasn't.
Well, it's already done.
Wasn't part of our agenda.
Agenda earlier.
Okay, so we're going to go one more time. Moved by Jeff Hegley on tabling the trip request two and three, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Casey. All right. Next item on the agenda, please help me welcome up Director of Student Services Sarah Welk, who's going to go over what the vote of concurrence for the American Indian grant.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Olson. My name is Sarah Welk and I'm the Director of Student Services. The American Indian Education Program is administered by the Minnesota Department of Education and provides per pupil funding to districts, charter and tribal schools that report an American Indian count of twenty or more through the MARS, which is Minnesota Automated Reporting Student System. Twenty American Indian students generate a base award of forty thousand dollars and each American Indian student beyond that generates an additional five hundred dollars. So the Minnesota statute, section one twenty-four D point seven eight, requires Minnesota districts, charters and tribal schools with ten or more American Indian students to have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, which is an APAC committee. And to be in compliance with this requirement, we are required to submit an annual compliance document to MDE each year, also known as the vote of concurrence or non-concurrence. APAC committee met and discussed whether or not they concur with the meeting, with meeting the educational needs of American Indians. This vote is formally reflected on the annual compliance, I'm sorry, annual compliance report. So I am here today to represent the APAC committee and their vote of concurrence to the school board. So thank you.
Welcome.
I will bring up the document later and have you guys sign that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, it's just an annual thing like Sarah was just explaining to everyone that gets done. That's a grant and the vote doesn't actually happen here at the school board. The vote happens with the APAC committee. So thank you. All right. Now we're moving on to our annual review of our community education. So we've got a list of people that are going to be coming up here. So first will be Director of Community Education Jeremiah Mack. Jeremiah, do you want me to bring everybody else up or are you going to bring them up one at a time?
They can all come up because then they can all talk.
Okay, then also help me welcome up.
I know they're really excited.
Yeah. Marketing enrichment coordinator Stephanie Jude, fine arts coordinator Ryan Sandell, recreation coordinator Jill Kudrowski, adult basic education manager Julia O'Neil, childcare coordinator Andrea Greenwald, and early learning coordinator Jen Johnson. Welcome.
All right. Well, thank you, board. We're here just to talk about updates for this past year on community education. Our overall program goals for us, we are the, part of the school district that serves all community members. So we're trying to make our schools accessible, maximize our facility use, program with community partners and get people into our schools to participate outside of the school day in the summertime is our main goal. As we said, we have six main program areas representing everyone up here on the stage and they'll kind of talk about all their different program areas. So we got Jen first to talk about early learning.
So for this first slide, I just wanted to emphasize about our early childhood family education program. So in the past year, we have had over six hundred registered participants in classes and special events. And we offered a new class this year at our Eastview site. So it has a nature-based component. And so we received some donations from some local businesses and community members. It was just very, very small. It's mainly just, just equipment and things that we needed for our backyard space. We put this in the back of Eastview. And so you can see there we have like a mud kitchen and we have just in, just different. We have, I couldn't show everything because it would have taken too many things. But those are just a couple of highlights there. The kids on balance beam and stump stools, just, you know, just experience that. And then other special events that we have had this year have been Big Wheels. We've had two parent night out activities. We've had our EEC prom, a family fun, and we will be hosting a family fun event at Bertram. And then in the summer last year, we did ECFE in the park, at various parks around the community. And the next slide, this is all about our, so first we have school readiness here and I'm happy to say that we were voted the best preschool for Monticello area. So we're very humbled and really appreciate the support that we get from the community. So this year we have served over two hundred and fifty students just at Eastview and twenty-four out of eight nature-based. So far this year for early childhood screening, we have had over two hundred and twenty children that have been screened between the ages of three to five. And then I just wanted to highlight that we also work along with Rally to Read. And the committee that I am on within Rally to Read, we have delivered to thirty-nine daycare providers. We delivered books and activities for them to do. And then we are hosting a child provider training and appreciation event here at the end of April. And pretty soon we will be launching the Imagination Library. And so we are looking forward to that where we can serve students ages zero to five that they can receive a book each month.
Next up is Andrea.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I just wanted to share some data with you tonight. I kind of realized as I was putting this slideshow together that this is our biggest school year so far since the start of our program in twenty, September of twenty eighteen. So we are currently serving three hundred and twenty students. We employ fifty-six staff members with varying schedules. So it looks like a lot of people, but everybody kind of has their different availability that we work with. We have served an additional forty students this school year as compared to last year and fifty-six as compared to the year prior, or eighty-six, sorry. I don't have full data yet for summer, but I do have two hundred and eighty-five students registered and accepted so far for our summer program. We're serving thirty more additional at this point and we have about twenty on the waitlist so far for this summer. So my job right now is lots of hiring and reference checks and trainings and it's a busy time of year for me right now. So my goal is always to get as many students in as we can and support our community as best as we can. Oh, actually, go back one second, sorry. One of my site leads is on each of these pictures and I just wanted to showcase the amazing work that they do because they work, we're open six to six, Monday through Friday at one school and before and after at the other. And they just are really amazing and I very much appreciate all of their hard work. So I wanted to kind of showcase them in those pictures. We had our annual license, licensure visit in February and that was successful. It's always a bit nerve wracking when she comes out and check, excuse me, it checks all of our, our training data and medications and background checks. And so that was a successful visit. My staff have completed their annual trainings as required by the state in March and I've got that all uploaded through our state system. So again, I can focus on hiring for summer. And I also wanted to showcase tonight, I send a survey out to families in the middle of the year, at the end of the year and then during the summer as well, just so we can, you know, make sure we're aware of how are they feeling? Do they like our program? Do they need something more from us? Are they having any issues with any staff? And I just am so thankful for all of them and the information they give during these surveys because it's always really uplifting and really nice for my staff to see. So I don't necess, do you want me to read the quotes or are we good? I think they, there was a very good survey. So thank you for your time tonight.
All right. Stephanie.
Hello. I am Stephanie Jude. I am the enrichment and marketing coordinator. So I also, not just planning the enrichment classes, but I do marketing for all of our programs here. I've done some work for Eric and the rest of the district too, just with my graphic design background. The school year, this last school year, we had two hundred and eight youth enrichment courses offered and we had five hundred and eighty-six participants. Our adult enrichment had a hundred and eighty-seven classes offered with three hundred and sixty participants. Summer registration opened on the fourteenth and the catalogs came out Saturday before that and registration's going really, really well. We have about one thousand one hundred and thirty-five summer registrations already to date. So it's been a really good start to the summer. Our youth enrichment courses, there's ninety of them offered for this summer. We partner with Big Lake on some of our STEM classes and art classes in just the summer months. Becker reached out to us recently and to Big Lake and they want to partner next summer on some of our, some of those classes as well. So we will do that in the future. It really helps to partner with Big Lake and Becker since we're so close to meet our minimum requirements for our classes to run. So that's a good partnership for us. minimum requirements for our classes to run, so that's a good partnership for us. We share the locations of our classes right now with Big Lake and Monticello in the summer and then Becker next summer will join in. For adult enrichment, we have 44 classes offered this summer and those are both in-person and online classes, they do really well. As far as trips and tours, I run all of those. I plan all of our trips and tours for not just us, but we partner with STMA, Big Lake, Maple Lake, Annandale, and now Becker wants to join us as well. So Becker is going to join us this summer on our trips. I take care of all the planning for our trips and then I send it out to these other districts so that they can just offer it, but I do kind of all the backwork on it. And then I just bill them out for all the participants. And we have two pickup locations for our trips and one is Monticello at Eastview and the other one is in St. Michael through STMA. So the other cities, when participants, when they register, they just come and get on our buses or the one bus and then we hit those two spots. Some of the pictures on the bottom are just a couple enrichment classes. There's one from the recent event that we did, Jeremiah and Andrea and Julia and I, we were at the multicultural event, which was really, really cool. That was a really fun event to be at. We gave out lots of prizes, got to meet a lot of people. And then the other two pictures are, that's my mom and I on one of our trips and we did go to the Spam Museum, which was fantastic. It was really, really fun. And another one, just another picture of a group of people that I took on a boat cruise in the summer, so, yeah, that's about it.
All right, Jill.
I'm Jill Kudrowski. I'm the Activities and Recreation Coordinator. This school year, we had 158 youth recreation courses offered with 2,265 participants, 1,243 unique users. This school year, we had 16 adult recreation courses with 284 participants and 151 unique users. Youth Recreation has set up 78 courses offered for this summer and Adult Recreation has five offered this summer. I highlighted some of the new course offerings for the summer. As you can see, the first one is a basketball camp. We have high school players who are being the coaches for the camp, which should be a highlight. And then Track and Field and Cross Country also has high school athletes coming to be the coaches as well. Monticello Community Band and pickleball lessons is being taught by our band instructor here at the middle school. We have pickleball ladder league, which is a hit throughout the year, so we're expanding it to Sunday nights in the summer on our new high school tennis courts that have pickleball lines now. One of our outstanding basketball players is running a youth basketball camp. And then we have another company coming in, Skyhawks, running a multi-sports camp, cheerleading camp, soccer camp, and a track and field camp. On the next slide, we have girls' flag football, which is the first year here in Monticello. It is 100% sponsored by the Minnesota Vikings. Our coaches are this year are Josh Larson and Dan Holker. The schedule, it is on Sunday nights and practices are on Wednesday, so we're encouraging girls who could also play in spring sports to play flag football for the first year. And then lastly, we have facility rentals, around 9,000 facility use hours for non-school-related events, over $220,000 for rental fees, and 97 different facility users. Recently, we have come across a lot of staff or outside users are wanting to use our facilities for birthday parties too, which is kind of exciting with the pool or just different gyms or classrooms, which is a fun time as well.
And just one thing on Jill's, like you think about adults, that might only be like one volleyball team, so there could be, there's a lot more people that participate than register once for like a team event. Same with like some youth sports stuff, it might be a team, so there's still even more kids, I don't know. Oh, get this one. Oh, okay. So, we are making a few changes. Obviously, we had Brendan for 13 years and Jill's here for, coming this year. As we go through a change of longtime staff, we kind of decided, just from feedback and we're trying to make some internal changes to better make our customer service experience better for our online facility users. So, we are switching our process of everybody having to call us or email us in the office to, we are switching to an online reservation system, which our system can do. So facility users starting now, they already can do, you know, start working on training is they'll be able to go online to make an online request to use our facilities. We'll kind of pull up the website. So we've updated all of our facility rental policies on our district website, so new users who want to use our facilities, you know, they would create an account through our community ed account, then go online to make reservations, we won't walk you through that tonight. But then if you keep going down Gavin, it has all of our, you just click on there, it'll take over to our LEO site to make a request to see what is available. We've also made some changes where all of our internal users will make their own reservation requests instead of calling us in the office. The high school, building administrative assistants can make their own requests, the activities department will put all their events in the system versus waiting for us to get back to them. They can go make their requests directly. We've got to ask that they get all their requests in by June 15th for next year that they have. So then all of our non-school users can get their requests in starting on a scheduled timeline. So that way, we get all of our school stuff in, then we can book around all the school events. You know, the best we can, obviously we know things come up, but we want to try to be more proactive, get all of our school stuff in first, as you can kind of see, nothing says it's what it is the event. Some events I do have turned on, like it's election night, so people just know why you can't have an event or it's a holiday or the pool's closed for construction, so that's why you can't rent the pool. But if it's just an event just says booked, it's not available because we don't want random people just saying, hey, what's going on, you know, in today's society. Gavin, you want to go back to the district site? And at the bottom of the page, we've updated all our facility policies of just kind of what the expectations for all renters are using the different spaces at the school. So that way, it's kind of clear, nope, this is what, this is what your expectation are, these are our facility rates are. And obviously, as we change facility rates going into next year, we'll update all those to match as we come along, so. And then we put some building maps and we still have to add some photos in for, we have not editor outside, it's photo space or, you know, just if we have more pictures of certain facilities. So this map would be like of the middle school, in the red boxes are the rooms that the public can just go and rent. Obviously, all the rooms are available for rent for internal users, but we don't make them all open to the public, to space. This is where most of our people use are the gyms, the pools, the auditoriums. So, all right Gavin, go back to the slideshow. We've also been working on, I started last week, training all of our youth sports associations of the new process and the timeline, so they're going to start doing that and we'll do that. And as we work with all new returning users, they will now go through and put it online themselves versus one of us spending a lot of staff time entering and creating their accounts and managing it for them. But then we still have to approve them, they just don't get what they want, everything still has to be approved by the community ed. Then we've been working as an office, trying to create a pay matrix for consistency for all of our community ed classes that we offer that a school employee would teach for us. So that middle school sports, a club, you're teaching, you know, pickleball, whatever that may be, there's going to be a set, there's a set fee structure of based on your participation numbers, how much you're going to get paid and how long, based on how the length of the course. So it's going to be pretty, and then obviously, we still have outside vendors that will still offer programming and then we set the final price, but they determine what that price is, that they're going to charge us to offer that program. So, all right, oh, I got that now, back to me. All right, next, Julia.
Hello, my name is Julia O'Neil and I have been West ABE manager since Ju, January 2nd. So pretty new, but I'm not new to the ABE world or community ed. A few years ago, I cross paths with Jemaya as my mentor and, and here I am. So, and then last fall, I also sub for a social worker position in, at EUC, so at Eastview, so it's an honor to serving Monticello School again. So West ABE is the name of our consortium. Each school district has to belong to one of the 39 ABE consortia. So we have 17 school districts that we partner with, with Monticello being our fiscal host, so we've been very grateful with your partnership and your support since 1996. And we are serving, serving four county jails, three local businesses where we offer English classes to these places where the workers would come during their break or before, after their shift and they, they attend English classes and they get paid for by the employee and employers and our teacher come out and support them that way. And then we have Career Force Center, we have a center in there with a teacher who is supporting with ABE, GED, or any career prep or college prep. And we are also has an, we have an official GED testing site at Eastview. And for our student, they must be 17 years and older or not enroll in K-12 and they need basic skills. And we are also part of the Workforce Opportunity and Innovated Innovation Act, so we, again, we partner with Minnesota State College System and Career Forces Agency to help students prepare for college and career. And this is important to us, we have two calendar years, it's kind of confusing, from May 1st to 30th. We don't get funding per students, like K-12, we get funding, state and FERL funding per contact hours that we generated, like the hours we serve our students. So we, they, the state MDE look at our hours collected from May 1st to April 30th, the end of the month here, to determine our next year funding. And then our second calendar year is July 1st and June 30th. And that's when we submit our data, performance data for state and FERL, FERL for accountability. And so this year is a big year for us because every five years, we have to submit something called five-year narrative, basically, basically a huge grand process where we have to asking, you know, just give the state all the details and all how we operate as an organization to ask for reorganization of our consortium. And so once I'm completing that, I will share with you the website that we have to submit it through, so you kind of know the in and out of how we operate every day. So in short, my job is kind of like a principal, but all my teachers are at the different seven school sites and four county jails, so yeah, I oversee everything, being a coach sometime and sometime being a, just to listen. So, we have 27 teaching staff who are licensed. I'm in the state of Minnesota and most of them are either retired teachers or have a, have a full-time job during the day and then they just love our students so much that they just come back and year after year and teach. And then a lot of them saying, oh gosh, I wish I knew about ABE before, you know, when, so I can switch over sooner, so. So we are very grateful for them. Again, the data I'm showing you is not complete because we don't, we have all the final data at the end of the month. So up to date, we have 1,723 students, so far of three students from last year, 34% female, 68% male, 75.4% of students between age, ages 19 and 44. So again, this is a really common range for people like trying to get up their skills and digital skill or basic skill to get back to the workforce or entering the workforce or improving them or moving up. 39% self-report that they are low income. Students are from 62 different countries across consortium. They speak 40, 34 primary languages, the top five are English, Spanish, Somali, French, and Russian. So the biggest request for us is ESL classes and we, a majority of our classes are ESL, but we still have a very strong GED and ABE program as well. We have served, up to date, 42 students from Monticello Schools identified themselves in the district border of District 882, 117 from Bright County. Something that the state of Minnesota has piloted the last three years is that through different consortia, we offering the statewide online courses focusing on job certifications such as in the fall this year, we offered CDL Class B Personal Care Assistant and then spring right now going on, ongoing right now is paraprofessional certification, Microsoft Office Certification and TE Test Prep, which is a lot of student need for entering our same program. So one thing that we really try to do is to create a local connection, so student would, in the community would sign up with us as a West ABE student and then the teacher will give them a test to make sure that they are, they are independent enough to be successful in those online courses and then they can be a local support if they needed. A big event coming up for us is the West ABE Honor Night where we honor recent GED graduates just across the area, whoever came through our door and our own GED graduates from West ABE and that, and awarding some achievement award to all of our students across the consortium. And that's happening in Buffalo Community Ed Building, so if you have time that Tuesday night at 7, stop on by. It's a very neat event that I've been part of three years. It's just really fun and just really touching to have these students, you know, just have the second chance, like I never got to walk, you know, during high school because whatever reason, they didn't finish high school and now they got their GED and it just, it just, it's a very good, it's really fun event to, to witness. And then new summer courses, pretty exciting for us. We want to pilot a GED Express Week where students are in the community, if they in need of getting their GED done, we just offering one week from 8 to noon to come in and study with us, study in the morning, test in the afternoon, and then by, hopefully by the fourth day, they are done with their four subjects and ready to walk by June 10. So, another thing we want to pilot to kind of bring out the barriers for students with, especially biggest barrier of us students are transportation. So we're going to offer online ABE, GED courses and advanced ESL course online to, to help those students. And I just put out goal, our mission of ABE in Minnesota, so, thank you.
And just, we had a student last week that something was wrong in the office, she had finally got her GED and she was so excited and screaming, something was wrong. So it was crazy to watch, just of the excitement of an adult learner when they complete their diploma, because whatever barrier they had for high school to get done. Next up, Ryan.
Good evening, everyone. Ryan Seidel, Fine Arts Coordinator. One of my larger goals this year was to branch us out, not only outside of the local school community, but really all across the Midwest and to establish a foothold in the Minneapolis theater scene, which is one of the largest in the country. I'm happy to report that this school year, we were able to bring in six new large full weekend events, which played in part to generate over $114,000 to the district, which, which put us up a little over $35,000 from last year. All of our clients who have booked with us this year are already on the books for 2026. They are thrilled with the customer service that they are receiving in the district, so I think that this will be a steady source of income that we will be able to rely upon and also we are, we're becoming a very hot commodity here in the area and either, when these large companies are coming in and, and want to book in the Minneapolis area, they, they are either choosing Monticello or they are getting told unfortunately, we are already full for that weekend. I think we only have one or two free weekends already on the books for 2026, so we are filling up relatively fast. This summer, we are partnering with Monty Acts. They are the local community theater program and we are going to do our first ever all-age casting program here, which will combine adult and high school students here to be on stage and act together, so we're very excited about that. We employed a number of new high school students into our, into our theater mentorship program, so it's students who are looking to sort of find a career after high school within the fine arts and we take them through this program and we show them all the ins and outs of how to make productions come to life. I have submitted a number of grants to the American Theater Wing to look to continue to upgrade our, our auditoriums in order to continue to, to provide the best service for everyone that comes in and uses it. And then just down below, we have all of our upcoming theater productions for the remainder of the spring. for the remainder of the spring and into the summer. This weekend, we have our middle school musical here. The following weekend after that, we are bringing in some folks from the Kaleidoscope Charter School to do Matilda the Musical also here at the middle school. And then looking towards the summer, we have, we have Tied to the Tracks, which is going to be a K through A melodrama musical that will take place here at the middle school. And then we will be rolling into our community theater program again, which is combining students and adults onstage. We'll be doing a Shakespeare classic, Macbeth for that. And then rolling into August, we will have our Storybook Theater, which was a huge hit last year, and they'll be doing Rapunzel. So lots of fun stuff on the horizon. And I think all the students are very excited to be participating in it. So pending any questions, that is all I have.
All right, just a couple other highlights. Aquatics, we, for the summer right now, we're offering two hundred and seventy-six swimming lessons sections. So starting June ninth, once this pool is hopefully ready to go. Dave said, construction pending, that we should be ready to go for June ninth. During the school year, our pool is very busy. So we pretty much only offer swimming lessons on Saturdays for private lessons. But then we do do pool and pizza parties on Friday evenings for elementary kids. We tried a couple of middle school ones, they didn't go. Then obviously, we can still sprinkle in some parties if other people want private rentals. And Caitlin Hegley and Cade Hanson are our new co-aquatics coordinators who manage the aquatics program. So they'll be on site making sure swimming lessons run during the summertime, which as you can see, there is a lot of them from between eleven AM and seven PM every day. Also, this is our seventh year of NWTA. Jeanne and Leanne will be back later in the fall to talk about NWTA. But currently, we have over four hundred different students signed up to ten classes, June, July, June sixteenth to July third. And we have fifty-one different sections of classes running this summer. So we only, this, we only canceled seven. That's the least we've ever canceled. So, and students can still register up until about a week before class begins, so. Last, any questions for anyone?
Good job, everyone. I have a question for Andrea Greenwald. Don't worry. On, on the program, is your biggest limitation, just personnel, hiring of personnel? Or is it space?
Yeah, yeah.
So space?
Space, I will say, hasn't, we haven't gotten there yet. I'm a little bit worried about summer at Little Mountain because we have right now a hundred and fifty on average a day, and there's a cleaning schedule. And so I'm working really hard with the head custodian, the principal, and we meet and, and we talk about it. But I know that you guys are very supportive, and I know they want to be supportive, but they also have their goals and they have things they have to get done. So they might clean one wing and then put us in a different wing. You know, when you're open twelve hours a day, you have to give a variety of activities, and you can't just shove thirty kids into four classrooms. That's not how it works. So they have been really helpful. But yeah, so far, space, it's, it's a worry, of course, but it hasn't been an issue. It's mostly staff. And so this summer, as I hire, I'm limiting the amount of days off they can have because I feel like in the past, it's our summer and it's Minnesota, and I'm pretty flexible. And one thing I'm trying to do this summer is limiting eight days off, no more, because it, they'll come in and say, I want forty hours a week. And it's like, great, we can give you that. And then when they need four weeks off throughout the summer, it's really hard to cover an eight-day shift, you know, an eight-hour shift. So, yeah, I'm getting a little bit, I can't be as flexible as I have in the past due to our larger numbers. So, sorry for the long answer.
Oh, that's, that's fine. I just, I just wanted to make sure if you're running any roadblocks, how do we, how do we help?
Thank you.
That's all.
I appreciate that.
That's the point of the question.
Yeah, yep.
I've ever seen Andrea have a roadblock. I mean, one of my coolest things I've seen you do this year was to partner with the Career Pathways Program at the high school. And, you know, having that be part of their repertoire in class and education and learning and, and work with, in the childcare system is absolutely fantastic, so.
I hope that they feel they gain necessary skills in their future. But we, I was able to hire fifteen student workers this year through the youth service partnership with Ms. Chido and Mr. Olson. And that really helped to be able to serve even more students, so, yeah.
And I'll just keep rolling just real quick here before everybody else jumps in. But I just want to say how proud I am of all you guys. I have had the opportunity to work weekly with you since February and in order to take on some challenges that maybe we're experiencing in the district and what I've seen in those meetings and the fun that we've had. It truly is one of my blessings, and I couldn't be more proud of each and every one of you. That meeting on Wednesday has become my favorite part of my week. So thank you so much. You guys are doing great things for the community. And that's, a lot of people don't understand it. You say it kind of weirdly, but it's, community education is from womb to womb. And it's really providing the whole community in every development stage of, of life an opportunity to thrive and be part of the community, and that's what you guys are doing.
Yeah, I know, I specifically like to see the community impact and the numbers that each of you brought. I love the fact that we're increasing our technology and accessibility. So I'm curious, like, when you brought everything online, and you just said the pool's renting out more now for birthday, I'm wondering if that's tied where it's just easier for the community to start booking or words getting out that that's a fun do for a birthday party?
I think we had a couple that started asking, and then they, and I get questions like, oh, can I do that? Yep. So the hardest part is just fitting into when we, around other things. But online stuff actually turned on on Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday was the first day it turned on.
I knew, okay. Well, it's exciting to see the creativity and the growth and the performance arts that were already booked out for next year. That's exciting to hear that that program's growing. And we've got some good things in the impact. The numbers that you all shared was incredible to see the impact that you're doing. So thank you for your hard work.
I think it's great. I have one more question. On the girls' flag football, it's a hundred percent sponsored by the Vikings, and I may have missed it. How is it just year to year or a couple of years? What's the timeline on the sponsorship?
Well, Jill wrote a grant, the Vikings are giving us fifteen thousand dollars to do this program. And then you could keep it as long as you spend the money on flag football from year to year until you're done. So what is our expense going to be this year?
It's one hundred percent sponsored, you're one, fifty percent, twenty-five percent.
So three years, so a hundred and then fifty, then twenty?
I think the Vikings' long-term goal is to get it to become a state high school league sport.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, so, okay.
Yeah, so the students only need to pay a minimal fee to participate this year. So then we'll see how much we have left over to keep keeping the cost down to get the girls participating, because we're paying for the busing, the coaches, all their gear, whatever they have, so.
At a minimum, the plan is a three-year program at least and try to grow it from there.
Okay. What do we have, like twenty-four girls signed up? So.
Oh, that's good.
You know, my daughter has some friends that participate, and they're really excited about it. If she wasn't already in another sport, she would have been all in. So they were doing a good job recruiting friends. They were all talking about it, so.
Yeah, because Saturday is, Sunday's their first game, so.
Any other?
I've, I've one for Julia O'Neill. Sorry. You guys are standing up here a long time, but it's, you're worth it. So on the, one of the slides, you talked about this GED Express, June second through five at Eastview Education Center. So part of the ABE program, I know we facilitate the funding here through Monticello, back to the other schools. But when events happen here, is do we receive any additional dollars through that program for events that happen onsite or on location?
Unfortunately, no. The fiscal, and Jeremiah can help me too. The fiscal, the reason we doing it here is because Career Force Center is more localized. Then I can just have the students come there for their initial assessment. And then I will, then before June second, is it June second to June fifth? And so then the student, we know for sure the student be able to, to meet the certain cut scores. And then that's when we, then like, okay, we invite them back. Okay, so June second, this is, this is your schedule. This is what the event day look like. And then for students that don't need the cut scores, they become, still become West ABE student. We can refer the local classes to whatever location they are in. But yeah, we don't. It, it's just another effort of us increasing our contact hours for next year funding. So we really pushing for additional contact hours.
Yeah, and part of me, the fiscal, is we do have, you know, we do divvy up our, every school gets a little bit reimbursement, a small chunk of what the total reimbursement is of, based on the census numbers. So we do have, most of the teachers are Monticello employees. A few are non-Monticello employees paid by Buffalo or Delano, I mean, Orno. So most of that money does stay here to pay for Julia's time or part of my time to be the fiscal agent. And then we, so we do get a benefit. But, you know, fifty percent of funding is if we get more students that come through hours, we get, you know, eight to ten dollars of contact hours. That just helps our funding for the following school year that we can keep providing services at, because it's a revenue-neutral program.
Anyone else? No? No? Thank you, Jeremiah and team for coming and giving us our annual update. You're doing good things. We're excited to see what next year brings. All right, on to item, agenda item number eight, Safe and Healthy Culture. We will bring up Director of Human Resources, Rob Danica, to go over second reading of policies.
Evening Chair Seeburn, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. All right, so we have a number of policies for second read this evening. And I'll go through them, and I'll pause for any questions that the board might have after each, starting with five twenty-seven, Student Use and Parking of Motor Vehicles, Patrols, Inspections, and Searches. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for use and parking of motor vehicles by students in school district locations to maintain order and discipline in the schools and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students and school personnel. No major changes on this one. This one's brought forward from our review cycle. Next up is five thirty-three Wellness. The purpose of this policy is to set forth methods that promote student wellness, prevent and reduce childhood obesity, and assure that school meals and other food and beverages sold and otherwise made available on the school campus during the school day are consistent and applicable. Minimum meat are consistent and with applicable minimum local, state, and federal standards. And so this is, again, coming forward from our policy review cycles. No major changes to five thirty-three as well. All right, next up is five thirty-four, School Meals Policy. The purpose of this policy is to ensure that students receive healthy and nutritious meals through the school district's nutrition program, and that school district employees, families, and students have a shared understanding and of expectations regarding meal charges. There are a couple of changes to this one, just updating Nutrition Department practice, our Nutrition Services Department practice with the policy. So the first is under Payment of Meals. And so just modifying that à la carte or second meal purchases are to be prepaid before meal service begins. And then also a similar change on page two of the policy regarding negative balances. Any questions on five thirty-four? Okay. Forward, this is five thirty-five, Service Animals in Schools. The purpose of this policy is to establish parameters for the use of service animals by students, employees, and visitors within school buildings and on school grounds. There was one minor clarification that came forward from, recommended by MSBA. And it just, two sections on page two of the policy regarding unfair discriminatory practices. Again, that would, that are captured adequately within ADA, but MSBA is just recommending we capture those two sentiments within the policy itself. Moving forward, Policy five thirty-six, Turning Point ALP Early Graduation. The purpose of this policy is to set forth requirements for early graduation from Turning Point ALP. There are no changes to this one. This one is simply brought forward by our review procedure. Moving on to five thirty-seven, Extreme Weather and Emergency School Closing. The purpose of this policy is to clarify the procedures that will be used in the event that schools must be closed for inclement weather and, or, excuse me, any other emergency. So there's minor changes here and really just recommended changes from our policy committee to update some of the language. Regarding other electronic options may also be used for the notification and the decision to close school during the school day will be at the sole discretion of the superintendent. And then just cleaning up some words there in five thirty-seven. All right, moving forward, five fifty. This is simply called Bomb Threat. The purpose of this policy is to outline the procedure that will be followed by administration, staff, and students in the event of a bomb threat at a school district building. And minor change here, the general term administration was changed to the more familiar superintendent or designee. All right, moving on. Five fifty-one, this is Early Admission. The purpose of this policy applies to parents who desire to enroll their child in kindergarten prior to legal entrance age of five years on or before September first of the calendar year that school, of the calendar year that school starts. And so we just made some minor changes in this one, just to clean up some words, including in the sentence I just read, clarifying September first of the calendar year that the school starts in, and then also amending a reference to District Eighty-two to read within district boundaries. Any questions on five fifty-one? All right, five fifty-two, Homeless Student Enrollment Dispute Resolution Procedures. The purpose of this policy is to assure the continuation of educational placement of a student in a homeless situation during a dispute. And so no major changes within this policy, some language cleanup articulation that the district's homeless liaison, for instance, is the Director of Student Services. Again, striking through District Amisbud Person and referencing superintendent or designee, for instance. Any questions on five fifty-two? Five fifty-three, Student with Food Allergies, Special Dietary Needs. The purpose of this policy is as follows. Monticello School District is dedicated to fostering the health, nutrition, and well-being of students with food allergies by providing education and a supportive community. Some minor changes within this policy really bring up to speed some of the nomenclature we've been using within the district. And the major one here is just the, the change from Food Service Department to Nutrition Services Department. And also an update of the turnaround time that the department can, can expect to be addressing special dietary needs. The turnaround previous was twenty-four hours. That's a pretty quick turnaround and frankly, probably not reasonable. And we amended that to five business days. Any questions on five fifty-three? Five sixty, Restraint and Secclusion. The purpose of this policy is to assure a safe school environment for students. There, the major change in this one was the policy itself was lacking legal references regarding restraint and seclusion. So those were added to the draft policy for five sixty. Any questions on those? Okay. Six oh one, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. The purpose of this policy is to establish broad curriculum parameters for the school district that encompass the Minnesota academic standards and federal law that are aligned with comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. And that itself is the major change to this policy. The state of Minnesota used to use what they called the world's best workforce, and that was modified last year, in last year's legislative session to comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. So updating references throughout and striking old definitions of work, world's best workforce, replacing, for instance, with definitions of comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. Any questions on six oh one? Okay. And finally, six oh two, The Organization of School Calendar is School Day. The purpose of this policy is to provide for a timely determination of the school calendar and school day. No major changes to this policy. And so just coming through our review cycle work again. And that's all I have for you, Chair Seeburn. This is, these are all up for action tonight, and so looking for a motion.
I just wanted to reiterate, these are, this is the second reading. So we've seen this the first time, or we've seen this already at the first reading, and they've already gone through policy months ago as well. So this isn't the board's first time looking at these policies.
All right, this is an action item.
So moved.
By Casey Root, seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. And like Casey had mentioned, we see these multiple times. Every single board member, not just the policy committee, gets the opportunity to review, see, ask questions, and update anything that needs to be updated. So thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and that brings us to item number nine, Adjournment of Our Meeting Here on Monday, April twenty-first at seven nineteen PM. Our next school board meeting will take place on Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty-five, at five PM. Have a good evening.